You gonna give me that up here?
Yeah.
Is Pat coming tonight?
We got a minute. We got a minute according to that clock.
Is Pat coming tonight? Is Pat coming tonight, the attorney?
Supposed to be.
There you go. Well, he ain't came when it comes, he's paid by the minute, he ain't messing around. He's not given any extra time.
He come in?
Yeah. That's when you run a pretty tight billing schedule.
Yes. Call the Oglesby City Council meeting to order.
Roger Bright.
Tom won't be here tonight, he's homesick.
Here.
Weaski.
Here.
Revara.
Here. Pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where which sustains one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Need a motion at second to approve the minutes of the May third regular meeting?
I'll make a motion to approve minutes from the May third twenty twenty-one regular meeting.
Second.
Roger Bright, Cullen, and.
Aye.
Curran.
Aye.
Weaski.
Aye.
Revara.
Aye. Public comments on agenda items only. Mary Nanda will move on. Approve bills as presented for payment.
I'll make a motion to approve the bills as presented for payment.
Second.
Roger Bright, Cullen.
Aye.
Curran.
Aye.
Weaski.
Aye.
Revara.
Aye. Approve one one six two dash zero five one seven two one in ordinance appropriating funds for the ADA curb ramp improvements in conjunction with the milling and resurfacing of Illinois three five one slash seven one Walnut Street to Lone Star Cement Railroad Bridge in Oglesby and Illinois seventy-one from Illinois three fifty-one to the Vermillion River.
I don't know if anybody has any, this is really loud, I don't know if anybody has any follow-up questions on that from our last meeting, this is just basically when they're gonna do the Columbia next year, that we can get our wheelchair ramps for all the curbs, curves, I guess. All right, with that being said, I'll make a motion to approve one one six two dash zero five one seven two one in ordinance appropriating funds for ADA curb ramp improvements in conjunction with milling and resurfacing of Illinois three fifty-one slash seventy-one Walnut Street to Lone Star Cement Railbridge in Oglesby, Illinois and Illinois seventy-one from Illinois three fifty-one to the Vermillion River.
I'll second.
Roger Bright, Cullen.
Aye.
Curran.
Aye.
Weaski.
Aye.
Revara.
Aye. Approve zero five one seven two one R supplemental resolution for maintenance under the Illinois Highway Code for the purchase of salt.
So this is what we talked about our last working meeting, when I told you I found out that we can actually purchase our salt via motor fuel tax fund, because all of the street department stuff comes out of the general fund. So we've already purchased about ten thousand dollars worth, we have to produce, we have to purchase another forty thousand dollars worth before June thirtieth to have that, so that's what this resolution is, just a way to buy it from another pot of money. Any questions on that? I'll make a motion to approve zero five one seven two one R supplemental resolution for maintenance under the Illinois Highway Code for the purchase of salt.
I'll second.
Roger Bright, Cullen.
Aye.
Curran.
Aye.
Weaski.
Aye.
Revara.
Aye. Next, to approve the appointment of Mike Benjamin to the Police Commission Board replacing Matt Klopinski, Matt declined to serve another term, and Mark Vandy Wingard to the Police Pension Board replacing Tom Porter.
I would like to go ahead and make the motion to approve the appointment of Mike Benjamin to the Police Commission Board replacing Matt Klopchinsky and Mark Vandy Wingard to the Police Pension Board replacing Tom Porter.
Second.
Roger Bright, Cullen.
Aye.
Curran.
Aye.
Weaski.
Aye.
Revara.
Aye. Set date for bid process for twenty seventeen Ford Explorer from the Oglesby Police Department to be sold.
This is just a vehicle that is not currently in service with the police department, it's considered access and can be sold to the public. I don't know, do we need to set the date right now for, for when to receive bids by? Yeah? Do we give that, what, two weeks for into the next? All right, um, you recommend longer? All right. Uh, so two weeks brings us to June third, seventh? First, okay. Seventh, the seventh, yes. Um, so I would like to make a motion to set the date to be June seventh.
At ten AM?
At ten AM for the bid process for the two thousand seventeen Ford Explorer from the Oglesby Police Department to be sold.
Second.
Roger Bright, Cullen. Curran.
Aye.
Weaski.
Aye.
Revara.
Aye. Approve preparation of the police G A S B six seven dash six eight actuarial valuation for the police pension fund by Lauterbach and Ammon LLP.
Uh, we were just discussing this prior to the meeting, um, basically this was a request from the Police Pension Board for us to approve and, and pay the bill that set forth. Um, the dates is supposed to be for fiscal years ending four thirty of twenty, four thirty of twenty-one, and four thirty of twenty-two. And part of their deliverables is that they would provide exhibits for a review as well as to do a presentation. I've not heard from the, uh, the Pension Board that they actually received a presentation, so I guess we'd like to reach back to them and ask for a presentation. But that even being said, it's something that needs to be done, so I would, unless there were questions, I would like to make a motion to approve the preparation of the police G A S B sixty-seven dash sixty-eight actuarial valuation for the Police Pension Fund by Lauterbach and Ammon LLP.
I don't have any questions, but I do look forward to the presentation, because this is obviously one of the primary things that was discussed when we were talking about debating if we should be raising the taxes or not, or whatever, and that was part of the reasoning, so I really look forward to their presentation, so I'll second the motion.
Roger Bright, Cullen.
Aye.
Weaski.
Aye.
Revara.
Aye. Place on file one one six three dash zero six zero seven two one in ordinance providing for and approving Seventh Amendment to the Oglesby Tiff one, excuse me, redevelopment project or uh, plan and projects.
I'll make a motion to place on file one one six three dash zero six zero seven two one in ordinance providing for and approving Seventh Amendment to the Oglesby Tiff District One Redevelopment Project R Plan and Project, I think it's supposed to be area, but that's fine.
I'll second.
Cullen, Roger Bright, Cullen.
Aye.
Curran.
Aye.
Weaski.
Aye.
Revara.
Aye. Place on file one one six four dash zero six zero seven two one in ordinance approving and authorizing the execution of a redevelopment agreement between the City of Oglesby, Greg Bojo, Oglesby, Tiff District One.
Is this the, the laundromats?
Yes.
Uh, facade program stuff that they did?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, I'll make a motion to place on file one one six four dash zero six zero seven two one in ordinance approving and authorizing the execution of a redevelopment agreement between the City of Oglesby and Greg Bojo, Oglesby Tiff District One.
I'll second.
Roger Bright, Cullen.
Aye.
Weaski.
Aye.
Revara.
Aye. This is place on file one one six five dash zero six zero seven two one in ordinance vacating the northernmost portions of Bennett, Swift, and Hazen Avenues in the City of Oglesby.
Uh, this is what we.
I need to interject here, uh, I'm sorry Jason, I cut your thunder there, but in trying to prepare this ordinance over the weekend, I did some research on the state statute authorizing either they be districts, and although your ordinance is not required hearing, the state statute does pre-.
Okay.
So we're gonna have to have a hearing, and I thought we would have, and it doesn't tell you whether it's got to be before the planning commission or the, or the appeals. Um, but I'm thinking it's more appropriate for the planning commission to look at the district than the one in more of the appeals. So we have a number sixteen for referral of some other matters to the planning and the board, so I think we'll take it up at the same time and just knock them off.
Okay, do we need to make that as a formal request for us to approve to, to refer it to them?
Uh, I think that's probably a good idea.
Should I do that now, or should I just include that on sixteen?
Or you could do it at sixteen, you could put what's on the list.
Okay, wait till sixteen? All right.
Just.
That's all right, so do I table this then, right?
Uh, while the ordinance, we're not gonna have to.
So then, do we table or just skip it? Okay.
Approve agreement between the City of Oglesby and the Oglesby Elk Lodge for the use of their property during the city, during city sponsored events.
I would like to make a motion to approve agreement between the City of Oglesby and the Oglesby Elks Lodge for use of their property during city sponsored events.
Second.
Roger Bright, Cullen. Curran.
Aye.
Weaski.
Aye.
Revara.
Aye.
Okay.
Okay.
Uh, refer amaranth requests for zoning variances to the zoning board of appeals or planning commission as appropriate.
Yep. Yep, well, it doesn't say specifically which ones they are, so I'll just say to include the Marzetta one, but I'd like to make a motion to refer the amaranth request, uh, along with the Mazaretta, is that what it says there?
Marzetta.
Marzetta, uh, vacating of the, which streets, Bennett, Swift, and Hazen Avenues, uh, for zoning variances to the zoning board of appeals or planning commission as appropriate.
And just so you know, Jason, I think Cameron's gonna take both boards again.
Okay.
Uh, because, because one is gonna be a special release for my situation because of the exceeding the square footage, I think, you know, it's a variant. And then there are, is there gonna be a DTI one two, or is it gonna be some of the, they don't take place, I mean, in the, in the, uh, use, okay. But even if we're exceeding that square footage, no, it's a zone, okay. Okay, well, maybe we will only have to do a zone board of appeals for a time, and the planning commission maybe probably for Marzetta, but I'll probably try to skip them both.
Okay.
And they have to be fifteen days before, so.
I think this is one of the, this is one of the meetings that we have a three-week break between the next meeting, so we, if we get the next one in the next week, we could.
Publish fifteen days before the hearings, and so we're gonna still be in a tight frame to get this done.
I'll second. Fourteen and sixteen.
Cullen.
Aye.
Curran.
Aye.
Weaski.
Aye.
Revara.
Aye. Uh, NEPS has discussed and said I, I M E A Electric, Electric Efficiency Program usage for the year twenty twenty-one.
So what this is, we, we do this every year, um, well, every year since the last couple of years anyways, I M E A sets a million dollars out, and they divide it based on usage for every municipality to use for things that they can upgrade. Uh, so the last couple of years, we've gotten nine thousand two hundred dollars, which means we can put seventy-five percent of that to the outdoor LED lighting that we do. So normally we buy twelve thousand dollars worth, and we get the nine thousand from them, that's how we've been upgrading all our LED lighting outside. Well, technically, in this electric efficiency program, in that money, that's if the city just uses it all themselves. There is ways that small businesses and certain things that residents can do, we haven't really had a request for that, we actually had a request this year, um, for a business that would like to upgrade some of their interior lighting for that. So it's upon us to decide if we want to allow that to happen out of the, the funds that we have. Well, here's the interesting thing with it, because of this, the positive things that's happened over at like GTI and some other things around the city, our load sharing has increased significantly. So for the last two years, we went from a credit of nine thousand two hundred to sixteen thousand three hundred. So I know it's probably not a huge amount of money, but keep in mind, that is what's shared all across the I M E A. So the fact that we have increased our load that we use by about eighty percent is pretty significant. So what I was gonna recommend was, I'd still like to continue the lighting program that we do, but I would like to see if we can set aside up to seven thousand dollars for businesses that are interested. If you look, I also added, there is one of the things that you can do for residents where they have a light bulb, uh, thing that we could be able to get residents and stuff, I'm not sure if we want to do that yet, but what I was gonna recommend is we set up seven thousand for that, and we put a timeframe like by July first. So whatever requests we get from any business that are interested in partaking this, we would have up to seven thousand dollars of that for them. If it doesn't all get utilized, no problem, we're definitely gonna use it all up. We, other municipalities, they have a use or lose, whether the user, that is not gonna be a problem in the City of Oglesby, we will use it for our LED lighting, because we have a couple more years before everything is one hundred percent finished in the city. So, um, does anybody have any questions on how the I M E A Efficiency Program works, or concerns about that? So I'd like to recommend that we set seven.
What's the criteria gonna be for requesting?
For businesses?
Or for internal organization?
Um, so they have, so there's some requirements they have, like for example, um, nearly it's all lighting, but there's a whole bunch of crazy things, like air compressors and compressed air nozzles, refrigeration measures, uh, variables, variable speed drives for HVAC pumps and motors, um, power factor, that's the city thing. So there's some weird things out there that, that they can do, most of it's all lighting. So what you have to do is, you don't necessarily, it's, you, you cap out at seventy-five percent. So if a business is gonna come in and they want to replace their interior lighting with, with LED lighting, they have to find out what they currently have for wattage, how much it costs them, um, and then what they want to go to. Depending on how much savings there is, that's how much they can get, you, you max out at seventy-five percent. Because the city's lighting system we have for the exterior lighting is such an old type of light, we hit the cap at seventy-five percent. When I talked to them the other day on the phone, most people will only cap out at thirty to fifty percent, because of the level of efficiency, like if you already have, um, what would you call those, I don't know, fluorescent bulbs inside your, your thing, you want to go to a more high efficiency, you might only be able to get fifty percent. So that means if you had, if you wanted to buy two thousand dollars worth of lights, you might only get thirty percent or fifty percent of that, uh, done, but you have to put an application in for it. You bet. So that being said, I'd like to make a motion to set seven thousand dollars of the I M E A Electric Efficiency Program funds for the City of Oglesby aside for businesses that would like to partake in that. And I'd like to set the date of getting applications by July first of this year. That was the motion.
Oh, I'll second.
Roger Bright, Cullen.
Aye.
Curran.
Aye.
Weaski.
Aye.
Revara.
Aye. Next on the agenda is approval of a part-time journeyman lineman agreement. Um, we've been having a heck of a time trying to hire anybody, um, so we've come up and with an agreement with the union that, um, for part-time wages only, no benefits, um, and up to a thousand hours a year until we're able to hire some people. It's fifty-one dollars for a journeyman and, uh, fifty-three dollars an hour for a, well, somebody that's gonna be running a crew.
That is not at our current wages now, though, for a journeyman.
That is correct.
Journeyman on.
Our, in Oglesby right now.
No, not at all.
Correct.
So if this person, if there were to be an approval for a full-time position, I would assume this person would be considered to be brought on as a full-time, then what will you do?
Well, if he would, if he would want, if he would want to come full-time with benefits, yes, it would go to whatever the rate is in the contract.
In, in the contract that we have with the, the IBW that we prepared this, it specifically says in there that this is not to replace a full-time employee.
No, I'm not saying the replacement, but I'm saying should the position be approved to get a full-time one in, that part-time person could certainly bid for the full-time job.
Sure.
Correct, correct. So the, the problem we have is, we do have a good crew right now of fantastic workers, but they're very inexperienced, they're very green. Um, and it's very difficult with the current wages we, we give, uh, because we've tried. We've tried hard to get, um, some people with some very, very detailed experience to, to train and teach our guys, and it's been very difficult to procure somebody of that skill set with the wages we're paying. So this kind of allows us to do one of two things, it allows us to get a guy that's not only well-trained, but still has the ability to work. Um, what I'd like to do is, and that's why the thousand hours is not even gonna be a problem, because this isn't gonna be for the routine work, this isn't gonna be for any maintenance or anything like that. This is gonna be so we, every, every couple of weeks, we can schedule a special project to get done that might take two or four days, and I can get a guy in here that's gonna train and make sure that our guys are well-educated and well-trained on how they're doing things. I, I think this will help bridge, bridge the gap until we're ready to get, uh, a new full journeyman lineman. If that makes sense. If there's no questions on it, uh, I'd like to make a motion for the approval of the part-time journeyman alignment agreement.
I'll second.
Roger Bright, Cullen.
Aye.
Curran.
Aye.
Weaski.
Aye.
Revara.
Aye. Uh, next on the agenda is wage committee recommendations, since Tommy isn't here tonight, uh, I would recommend that we table this until next meeting.
I'll make a motion to table the wage committee recommendations till next meeting.
Second.
Roger Bright, Cullen.
Aye.
Curran.
Aye.
Weaski.
Aye.
Revara.
Aye. Next is consider requests from Claudettes and Bulldogs Bar for a street closure in August. It's one day, it's Saturday, it's a Cops for Cancer benefit.
I have no objections, and so I'd like to make the motion to consider the request from Claudettes and Bulldogs Bar for street closure in August twenty twenty-one.
I'll second that.
Roger Bright, Cullen.
Aye.
Curran.
Aye.
Weaski.
Aye.
Revara.
Aye. Next on the, discuss recommendations submitted by the Seneca Square Committee. And, um, about this, this is a letter I received from Rick Rigascho. The committee opted to take a position that because of the condition of the wall, that they did not feel that it was in the best interest of the city or the committee to allow the use of Seneca Square. Therefore, the recommendation of the Seneca Square Committee is to close and lock the front gates and close the snow, and close the snow fence off in the back. It is further recommended that notices be posted on the front and rear fence notifying the public that until further notice, the area is closed to the public. The decision is based on the feeling that there is more danger of someone getting hurt than any possible gain from leaving it open. It reflects the committee's concern of liabilities for the members of the committee if something did happen. Very truly, Rick Rigascho, committee chairman. We also had this building in, or this wall inspected by Jim Clennert, who's an engineer, and, um, he gave us a recommendation. Uh, Jim, would you like to get up and speak?
Um, when I was asked to look at the wall, they were looking to put a mural and some attachments to the wall, and I recommended some work need be done, and we found out that the price of that was, was very expensive. So the, the wall needs to be tuck pointed and some of the bricks tightened up. Right now, the, the only risk is for an occasional brick might fall down, and it falls straight down, it's not like the entire wall's gonna collapse and go spewing across the, the Seneca Square area. So, uh, my recommendation is a very conservative recommendation was to put like a snow fence five foot off the wall to keep people from standing or being right next to the wall. I mean, I have no concern about a complete collapse of that wall that would be a problem and injure people. I think they may have taken my recommendations and, you know, maybe extrapolated a little bit too far.
Yeah.
So, you know, if we started to see bulges in the brick or something like that, then it's a different story, right? You know that that outside face is gonna maybe pop unexpectedly, but right now, you've got just loose brick and, and loose pieces of, I guess you'd call it plaster, a pie.
Yeah, I was a little surprised to, uh, to, to read that, that letter from the committee, because I didn't know what they were basing that off of after we gave them the engineer's report. Um, so in, in there where you say that you don't have a concern of the, the, the wall collapsing in any way, shape, or form, how often do you think if we were to use Seneca Square, would you recommend that it gets re-inspected? Two years, one year, five years?
Probably every couple of years.
So like every two years?
Or after some severe event, you know, if there's a, another derecho go by, you know, and more of the roof was peeled back and it might knock loose and stuff, then you take a look, but, you know.
So you would recommend probably just be re-inspected every other year unless there's a severe weather event?
Right.
Okay.
And, and we erect a barrier?
Yeah, you, you put just a little snow fence, I mean, really, just, most of that wall has some trees, small evergreens, right, in front of it, so just this side, just the open side of the trees, put up the fence and.
You said five feet, right?
Yeah.
So like if I were to put decorative, if somebody were to put decorative gravel or decorative rock down five feet away with the bushes there, stay off the rock, put a sign.
Not fond of snow fences.
I'm not fond of, yeah, especially when something looks nice, decorative rock would be nice, and put two signs that says stay off the rock, and you should be good.
If they evade the sign, it'd be fine, I can't, I've, uh, I've seen more, you know, signs that ignored quite a bit.
Yeah, there's a sign.
There's a sign.
And we've, uh, we've tried to contract Jim, the gentleman that owns the building next door, and he isn't interested to, to doing anything right now.
Right.
But just to double check again, I want to be able to put this out publicly, in your professional opinion, there is not a concern for the wall collapsing?
Correct.
All right.
Okay.
Very good, thank you, Jim.
And I, I, I would not be opposed of even a decorative fencing that kept people away from the wall and kept people away from defacing the wall.
Yeah.
You know, um-
Well, I'd like to get a mural painted on it, too. I, I heard, I'm told that I, they're, they're very cheap. Well, Streeter, Streeter apparently has something that's a little bit fancier, 'cause they have, uh, they have something that they attach to it actually, over the front of it. I'm talking about just putting a mural right on it. I think it'd be nice in the downtown area. But more importantly, I'd like to be using Seneca Square. I know the previous administration had a very grandiose plan and idea, um, and I know that we were kinda all opposed against that, which is fine, but I, I think we also came up with the, the idea that, that we can probably spend a fraction, I mean, one point five million was quite a bit. Even ten percent of that, at a hundred and fifty grand, you can do quite a bit in there. I, I, I think, I, I'd like to proceed with the idea of getting tables and benches, so the idea that we can start hosting more type of events, uh, down there in Seneca Square.
Okay.
Okay.
So we don't have to make a motion, that we just discuss the recommendations, correct?
We discuss the recommendation, and, uh, I value Mr. Clennard's, uh, opinion.
Okay.
So. Anything under old business? Public comments?
Well, since we were just talking about Seneca Square-
State your name for the record.
And it's Greg Stein, Oglesby resident. I agree with Jim. I, I think five foot is sufficient for the occasional possibility of a brick falling out of the wall. I also am with Jason that I'm not happy with a snow fence. I would like you to consider maybe a five-foot of low bir, uh, junipers or some kind of, and, uh, sheet the entire wall with, uh, stickery junipers. That, uh, you wouldn't wanna walk into, and, and rocks, and, and little signs that says, "Stay off the rocks and the, and the, and the plants." And maybe a little bit of, we're, we're concerned that, of falling bricks. As far as hanging, um, a mural on the building, I don't like you doing that. You're, you'd be, um, um, creating a vapor barrier behind it that will, uh, help the bricks deteriorate. Um, and you will increase your liability by doing something like that, and I don't think it, we, we need the park to be used more than it has to be perfectly pretty. I think that covers it. Uh, I am concerned about the chimney up there. It's, it's a tall chimney that we don't, uh, use chimneys burning coal in the basements anymore. It could be knocked down a few feet. I did, uh, have a conversation with Jason that it is being a, it's a common wall, um, and could the, uh, could Jim Saunders, uh, use the, um, facade money to, uh, that the city has in its, picked up in its coffers? He, and he said that he could if Jim agreed to it, but you said Jim doesn't have the, doesn't wanna go into that, but, uh, it just kinda reiterate that little conversation. I think that covers that. The other, I raised my hand to ask during the lineman, fifty-one dollars, fifty-three dollars, um, agreement for part-timers. You didn't mention anything about, uh, if they get benefits?
No benefits.
None. Okay. You have to pay social security for them, don't you?
Well, taxes, yes.
Okay.
The taxes we have to pay.
Alright. That's it then, thanks.
Uh, commissioners' reports? Terry?
Um, I have very little. I, I did wanna, uh, commend our EMS response to the explosion that happened, uh, week, week and a half ago. On the, down by Utica, Star Rock area, they, um, were very helpful with everything that was going on, and they just did a fabulous job. Um, second, I just wanted to bring up masks and vaccinations. The CDC has recommended that those people who are fully vaccinated and pass their two week after vaccination point should be able to, uh, be maskless in, in many situations, meant a lot of situations. The CDC puts that out, the Illinois Department of Public Health and the governor has to adopt it and set the guidelines. Jason and I were just looking at that moments before the meeting started about what the governor is saying and how it's going to trickle down to everybody. There is not gonna be any vaccine police out there saying, "Are you sure you're fully vaccinated?" Nobody has that time, so we're just trusting that people, number one, get vaccinated. If you haven't had the opportunity to get vaccinated and you need help setting up an appointment, talk to me and I'll help you get set up with some, someplace in the area. But two, um, there are some places that will not be able to go mask-free, and one of those happens to be in an organization that I work for in healthcare right now. We will not be mask-free. Currently, schools are not, but I believe that's even going to be lightening up soon. And then, of course, places like, um, where they have cohortings such as jails, nursing homes, those types of places will still have masks and, and ask that visitors do the masking. I just wanna say that it's a wonderful time, or we're gonna get our, and don't have to wait until twenty-two for a redo of twenty. I'm thinking we're gonna get some of that in twenty-one, so it's a good time, but please use caution. If you haven't been vaccinated, please consider getting it. We have a glut in this area, uh, not including, including those that are twelve to eighteen or twelve to sixteen. The, um, the rate of those fully vaccinated in LaSalle County is just thirty-one percent. So we have a lot of people who are not fully vaccinated yet. Uh, so please ta, take caution, wear your mask when you can't socially distance, um, and in places where it is not post, well, if it's posted to masks being required, you should have your mask on. And so please be respectful and patient for those places who are not adopting or cannot adopt that maskless yet. Just have some fun and hug people that are close to you. That's all I have.
A couple of things, um, chipping went, uh, well with the street department, uh, last week, no problems there. Uh, they're continuing to do the street sweeping, so if you have a street that doesn't look like it's been swept yet, they're still, they're still coming and making their rounds yet. Um, also, water, um, hydrant flushing will start next Monday. It'll go about a week, it's just the routine flushing, so if you see some low pressure or anything like that, it shouldn't last very long, it's pretty routine. And that's about all I got.
Colvin? Uh, just got a couple of comments here. The Tree and Stone Program put on by the Park Department is officially closed, and planning will begin in roughly two weeks. Summer recreational program in person signups are this Wednesday, May nineteenth, from five to seven at City Hall. And that's all I have. Just a couple of short things, uh, Oglesby Fun Fest is on, June seventeen, eighteen, nineteenth, and twentieth. City garage sales, it's Friday and Saturday, June eighteenth and nineteenth. Please call City Hall to be put, uh, on the garage directory and map. Carnival bands, crafts, food, refreshments, beer gardens, all four nights. Craft and vendors, uh, forms may be picked up at City Hall. Fifty-fifty drawing, the city has given us a kickstart with six thousand dollars incentive to get it started. Today, we're only at seven thousand, so please, please come and buy some tickets, support the city in this, uh, in this cause. Come one, come all, and support City Fun Fest. The other good news is it appears that we get our, we're getting closer to reaching an agreement with Amaran on a second fee to Oglesby. This would improve our reliability and make Oglesby a place to locate. Uh, we have closed session on the agenda. I would recommend that, that being that Tommy's not here, we skip it tonight. And I will entertain a, a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Colvin, Colvin, Curran, Leeaski, Revara.
Aye. Adjourn.